I know.
Good afternoon at this time. Good to see y'all. Happy New Year. I think we met this year our first meeting for the year. January ninth, twenty twenty five, our wed session. This time we're gonna call it the order. We have no guest speakers, no old business. Our new business will discuss the possible recreational impact. Feed the county council, staff review the process, regulation of the impact.
Okay, so really this is more of an informal, just informative thing. County council just passed this Tuesday night. So y'all have seen nothing, but of course y'all knew it was coming at some point. They want to push forward with an impact fee study, which is required in order to actually impose an impact fee. In your little packet that she gave you, there's a copy of the resolution that they passed. And then I made y'all a cheat sheet that just kind of goes over some of the the rules and requirements for actually, you know, putting in an impact fee. Impact fees must be used to pay for specific improvement. So in other words, if you want a substation for EMS in Merryweather, then you need to find out how much that substation costs and exactly how long it's going to take you to collect those funds for whatever fee you decide to charge. It cannot be, we're gonna collect money for EMS. That's too vague. It has to be a specific capital improvement. They can't be discriminatory, so you can't say this person has to pay it, but this person doesn't. If it's a new residential unit, it applies in that entire area. Now, you can differentiate areas. So for example, if you think, you know, solid waste authority needs some help on the Highway twenty-five corridor, and EMS needs help in the Merryweather area, you can have two separate fees for the two separate areas.
I was looking earlier. It said that water and wastewater is exempt from impact fees. Is that not correct?
So it's not necessarily exempt, but Edgefield County doesn't. We are not a public utility.
This was on the South Carolina State House.gov website on that, talking about impact fees. And they said that exempt is wastewater and water. And I was thinking that we had somebody come not long ago and say that our water and all was maxed out, you know, and
we have
Were we able to charge impact fee?
You don't need a study when it's water and sewer and it's a very specified amount of installation. So for example, Tavern Hill and Windsor, they both already have impact fees on those developments. Because the Edgefield County Water and Sewer Authority, in conjunction with county council, approved to fund an extension of the sewer line to get to those two planned developments. In that case, we simply took the cost of the expansion and divided it by the number of lots, and that's the impact fee that they pay on each lot. That's to reimburse the investment from Edgefield County Water and Sewer Authority. That's so cut and dried that, yeah, it's exempt because you don't, you don't need a study when you literally have a receipt in your hand already. The other thing with it is most of the time with water and sewer, you're still talking about an entity that is providing a life critical feature. You know, water and sewer is, you, you have to have it. So they get some exemptions. Other things that can get exemptions in impact fees are, you know, EMA related things. But again, you're still, you still have that specific requirement that it has to pay for a very specific thing. It can't be a vague, you know, we're gonna charge a hundred dollars impact fee forever just for this. It has to be a specific cost that you're trying, a specific number you're trying to reach. So you need to be able to say, I'm trying to collect three hundred and sixty thousand dollars for X. And then you apply your impact fee. Impact fees cannot be put on things like renovations, repairs. It has to be new construction. So basically, it can only be charged to things that have an impact.
That could be an add-on, or like if it burns down in a fire, you can't charge them an impact fee.
That's correct.
But if they add on to it, then that could be
So additions are kinda, if they increase the capacity, you could make an argument that they've increased the size, so they're having more people, therefore it's a higher impact. But generally speaking, you do not see it on things like renovations, additions, and utility type structures, you know, somebody builds a garage, or somebody builds a, you know, pool house, whatever. Unless it has a residence inside of it. So if you build a man cave that has a bedroom and a kitchen and a bathroom, okay, well then you might have to pay an impact fee. It can apply to any commercial or industrial. So you can, you know, if a business is coming in, that's still an impact. You can charge that. It doesn't have to just be residential units. It can be all new construction units. The requirements for it, you gotta have a capital improvement plan. So we, well, county council in twenty twenty-three redid their strategic vision plan. But I have not as of yet found a updated copy of the capital improvement plan. We do have one. It wouldn't, it won't be hard to update, obviously. And in my opinion, and y'all can discuss this amongst yourselves, but in my opinion, it would probably be better to have a capital investment plan specifically for impact fee if that's the if, if that's the route we want to go. Because, you know, we might have a ten-year plan with twenty items on it in the overall capital improvement plan, but you might end up wanting to fund three things with a, with a impact fee. You might not want to try and fund the entire capital improvement plan. You understand what I mean?
When you're talking about a man cave you're building, is everything gonna have this impact fee on it? Like if I build a new house, no matter who it impacts, if I'm on a well and septic tank, it won't bother anybody? Is this gonna, just like you mentioned, the man cave?
If you are in the area where it's applied and you build a new unit, you have to pay it. So if you're a developer and you're building two hundred units, you gotta pay that fee two hundred times. If you're grandma and you want to cut two and a half acres out for your grandson and he goes to get a building permit, he's got to pay it once.
So it's an extra tax on people all across the board?
Every single person that builds a new unit has to pay it, if they're in the area that it's affecting. Now, if we apply that impact fee to say Merryweather, then obviously if you're building a house in Northside, that doesn't apply to you. But also you have to show that whatever that impact fee is paying for is benefiting the person paying it. So if you wanted to raise money for, you know, something in Northside, you can only apply that impact fee in Northside. You can't apply that to the people in Merryweather because they're not getting any benefit from what it's paying for.
So how is the amount of that impact fee determined?
So that's where your impact feasibility study goes. Obviously, you know, you have to balance it out. I mean, you could throw a five thousand dollar impact fee on and a developer wouldn't care because they're just gonna tack it on to the cost of the lot and pass it on to whoever buys the lot. No big deal to them. I mean, they'll complain about it, but at the end of the day, it doesn't have that big of an effect. But if grandma's gotta pay a five thousand dollar impact fee, that's, that's hard. That hurts. So you have to balance out, you know, what's reasonable for people to pay and what's not. And you also don't have to collect money all at one time. So for example, if we wanted to do a new ambulance for the Merryweather district, you know, for example, and we, we know it's three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, okay? Well, we can say, okay, well, the life of that ambulance is five years. We can finance the ambulance now and use the money collected as the payment to make, you know, like a debt service on the ambulance instead of trying to wait till you collect three hundred and fifty thousand dollars and then spend it. You see what I'm saying? We can basically finance it and then recoup the money through the fee.
Well, this actually talks about professional expertise, and I had written that down. We need to retire, retain engineering and legal professionals. Do we have those on staff already to do this?
I mean, we do have a design, we do have design professionals for structures. And then legal professionals, that's basically the consultant you have to hire to do the feasibility study. There are other options though, and David and I are looking into that. Where, where he's gonna reach out to his contacts at Clemson University and Lander, and I'm gonna reach out to Augusta University and Charleston. Most of those colleges have planning departments, and they have their own grad programs. And sometimes, you know, they will allow a student or group of students to take on a project kind of like this as a grad project. So we're gonna see what that would take. You know, obviously, the timelines would then change because, you know, we can tell a private company, hey, we want you to do a study. You got six months to do it. You can't really do that if you're getting, getting it for free from Clemson. I mean, if it takes a year, it takes a year.
So do we have any idea what it's gonna cost to have the study done for this consultant?
So I looked at averages across the state. I've seen some as low as ninety to a hundred thousand, and I've seen some that were well over two hundred. I wrote up an RFP for y'all to look at as an example in there. I just made sure it didn't miss anything. Edgefield County's not really that big, so I don't think it would be that big of a job. So we probably won't be on the high end of anticipate a hundred to a hundred and fifty. Because one of the other requirements is that you have to use the comprehensive planning process to do your feasibility study. So when you develop your impact fee ordinance, you have to use the same process we use when we create a comp plan. So you have to have public input, charrettes, you have to some of y'all probably remember that whole process that we, we've done before. You know, you, you have to list out an inventory of all of your existing conditions, what you need to improve. So have a statement of goals, and then you have to find, figure out a way to implement it. So that process is the exact same as the comp plan process. We might get an RFP out and somebody comes back and says, hey, look, yeah, it's not, it's not worth it for you. You shouldn't do it. It's possible. It could happen. They could say, hey, you know, by the time you collect the amount of money you want, it'll be twice as expensive. And then that stuff you'll have to balance out. They might give you three or four different options on fees, what they could be. There's gonna be a lot of back and forth. So it's, it's a, it's a get the consultants in and then you work with them over time to develop it. It's not gonna be a, yeah, charge five hundred dollars a unit and have a nice day. It's never gonna be that simple. It's always more complicated than that. But one of the things is, you know, you, you need a, a very good idea of what you want to pay for and how much it costs. And one of the state requirements is that you know exactly what it will cost. You can't just say, we think we need about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, they want to see an invoice from the manufacturer or the seller saying, this unit's three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You can't just guess at it. If you say, we want to build a substation, well, they want an architect or an engineer or somebody to say, this building's gonna cost this much money. It cannot be guesswork. So that's, that's one of the biggest things. So we have to do that capital improvement list as a part of this. Now, there's no law that says the capital improvement list has to be done by a professional. If, if, I mean, y'all can sit down and come up with a list of things that you want to fund. I mean, y'all talk to your constituents and say, you know, what's the biggest need in this area? Y'all can come up with that yourself if you want to. There's no legal requirement that that be done by a professional. It's something you can have done by the professional, but it's not a requirement. The only thing that's a requirement is the feasibility study itself. So and that doesn't necessarily have to be done by a professional, but it's got so much legal aspects to it that you need somebody that knows what they're doing to, to navigate that and get it all put together. So in, in closing, I guess, for my comments, y'all see the example RFP? Read it. Y'all have ideas y'all want to change, things that you like or don't like about the RFP, let me know. We'll communicate through email until the RFP's the way you want it. Then we'll send that out and we'll see what we get back. If they come back and it's way too expensive and that's not the route we want to go, we can move in a different direction.
Is this outside the city limits, like Edgefield, Johnston, Trenton, or is it included?
It'll be countywide.
So it's inside the city limits also?
Now, we can't apply a fee inside the city limits.
That's what I'm asking.
But we, this will be the unincorporated part of the county. Now, the study may cover the areas around the cities, you know, in conjunction with the city. And they might even recommend, hey, the city needs to, you know, do X, Y, Z. But obviously, we don't have any legislative authority in the town, so, you know, we can't impose fees on the town. Now, if they want to use our study to develop their own impact fee ordinance, yeah, sure they can. But it's not overly complicated. Council just wants us to push it forward. And one of the requirements of the law is that the planning commission be the one that does that. So here it is.
It was they had this at the last meeting, right?
Yes, that resolution I wrote for the last meeting. Your copy is not signed, but we do have a signed copy. It did, it did get passed.
So there's neither one reading on that yet, right?
Yeah, it's just a resolution. Because they're, they're not expending funds, nor have they passed the law yet. So once y'all get the RFPs back and, you know, who you're gonna hire or if you're gonna hire, and you make that decision, then you'll make that recommendation to council. That will be the first official action they take on it is, you know, let's say you hire X, Y, Z group to do this, then that will be the first thing that goes to council.
How long before you think you'll, you and David will know from Clemson and Charleston?
So I think David actually called their business department today. He's, and their business department basically said, you know, you really need to talk to the planning department, but we do do those sorts of things, but it can have an extended timeline. Because obviously, if it's a grad student project, that's a, that's their last year of school, so it's probably gonna take them a year. You know, you can't really just tell them, I need it done in six months. It's free labor, so you know, if they, if they decide to take it on, or several of them decide to take it on, you know, you're kind of stuck to their timeline. I imagine, you know, Clemson doesn't have the hugest, or the largest, planning education. They're more engineering, agriculture, business, that sort of thing. But Augusta University, Lander, and Charleston all have large planning divisions, I think. I know Charleston does. It has a huge and Augusta has the Masters of Public Administration program, so they probably have a pretty good planning staff too. But we, it don't hurt to ask, and I don't imagine, you know, if it's something that they normally do, it should be a pretty quick and easy answer. Now, the answer might be, yes, we do it, but we have a list three miles long and you'll have to get on it. Yeah, but it shouldn't take us long to get an idea of what they can offer or not, and what it would cost. I mean, personally, if you could get it through one of the colleges, even if it took a little longer, personally, that helps the students and it helps the county, you know, and, you know, not just in cost, but everybody benefits. I don't see anything wrong with that, you know, it takes an extra two or three months, okay? You know, we're a government entity. We don't have to be in a hurry to do things. So
That'd be the ideal way to go.
It, in my opinion, that, that would be a good choice because, you know, obviously, the cost will be lower for taxpayers. You know, if that knocks from a hundred and fifty thousand down to fifty thousand, that's a pretty you know what I mean? That's a, that's a significant reduction if all we gotta do is wait an extra few months. But we don't know that yet. We don't even know that they'll take that on. So once I have that information, I'll just email that out to you. I know that Clemson has done other studies for other jurisdictions and other areas before, but this is a specific thing, so I don't know how all that works yet, but we will figure it out and let you know. As for companies, this is a requirement of state law, so there's plenty of companies that do, I mean, Aiken's done one, North Augusta's done them. I mean, there, there are companies that do it. It is a pretty lengthy process just because it's got the same sort of requirements as the comp plan. You know, you do have to get a public input. You do have to put it all out there. There's some math to do. There's some capital improvement plans to write, but the, from what I've seen, it usually typically takes six to seven months. It's not a super long study. I imagine, you know, if y'all break it down by council district or fire district, I imagine that, you know, just because I issued the building permits, I can tell you, for example, putting an impact fee on Northside is a waste of time. They build eight houses a year. Even, even if you put a thousand dollar impact fee on them, you're gonna make eight thousand dollars a year. That's not even worth you, you see what I'm saying? That's just not useful. County line, Merryweather, that's the Highway twenty-five corridor and District Five. Those are the areas where fifty-six percent of our growth is, so Edgefield probably comes in right after that. Now, with the water and sewer the way it is, if that doesn't change soon, you'll see a lot of that shift to Edgefield instead of Merryweather. Because we got water and sewer here. We don't down there. It's that simple, so.
The Beddys side of Edgefield, do you think that's gonna increase?
Not right now.
At any point? Sooner than later, or later than?
I think if the water and sewer system issue goes away, you'll see three large developments or so from Beddys to North Augusta. Hopefully, the county will work out this issue with the industrial park that's currently in litigation. And if so, and we can get the water and sewer supply, hopefully we'll have some industrial partners come in because we done had to tell many of them no lately because I need three million gallons of water a day capacity. Well, even if we can give you the water, we can't get rid of the water. So sorry, we can't have you. And that's just an unfortunate situation that we're in right now. If that gets fixed, we could see more industrial on that side in the industrial park. As for the ag side of things, now, I don't think we'll get any major subdivisions or anything like that, not on that side. It's always possible, but the people that own those large properties on that side of, they've been in, they're, they're family properties. I don't foresee it. It's, it's obviously, it's not impossible, but then obviously around the town of Edgefield, well, we've got one that's already in process. You could see more like that in the meantime because, like I said, it's the only place with water and sewer. So inside the town limits is likely where you will see it. That didn't really have anything to do with y'all, so you know, that goes through the town, so.
Do you see the water and sewer getting resolved anytime soon?
So last I heard, there was some capacity released, or they, the state allowed some capacity to be released. And North Augusta obtained that capacity. But since there's so much uncertainty on when the next bit of capacity is gonna be released, they're hoarding it, basically. They're not selling it to others. And you can't really blame them because right now, we don't know when this problem's gonna have a real solution. And that's my biggest thing with it is y'all need to figure out what you're gonna do and go ahead and start because if we're talking another water treatment plant, well, that's not a quick process. That takes years. Infrastructure on that scale is, is, is long-term. It is not a overnight type fix.
Are those things even being looked at right now? Like where you would have a new wastewater plant or?
Well, we in Edgefield cannot have a wastewater plant. Not, not of that scale. We have some small ones that, that go into some creeks. But because the area we would need it in is Stevens Creek Savannah area. Augusta, North Augusta's inlets for their water plants are below Edgefield County. So we can't have an outlet onto the Savannah or into Stevens Creek because they will sue the crap out of us for having an outlet above their inlet.
North of their drinking water.
Yeah, so that's why we buy our capacity through North Augusta, who then buys it through Aiken.
So that dump below the canal down, below the
Now, that being said, realistically, with modern filtration practices, the water that gets put back in the river is cleaner than the water that was taken out of the river. But there's the mental effect of that of, oh, well, their, their sewer outlet is above our inlet, you know, and
We're drinking similar water.
Yeah, they don't like, people don't like that. So, you know, from a scientific standpoint, yeah, it doesn't really matter. But from a public perspective standpoint, it very much matters. And Augusta and North Augusta and probably Aiken would have a fit.
Oh, well, we would have to give it from
So Aiken's gonna have to make their water treatment plant a lot bigger is basically where it's, what's, what it comes down to. And then we'll just buy our capacity from them. Now, we could Edgefield County Water and Sewer Authority could technically get easements and pipe it down to the outlet that's already there and then build one. But the cost of that would probably be yeah, I don't even know, but that's a long way to pipe it. I'll just say it that way, so. There's no foreseeable fix for it in the future, I'll put it that way. We're probably still looking at four or five years. Because realistically, even if they started building it today, it's gonna, it's gonna take years to fix.
So really, new development is re, I mean, they can't, if they can't have water and sewer.
So around the towns of Edgefield, Johnston, of course, have their own water treatment plants. And then obviously, if somebody wanted to come in and buy a large tract of land and do a, you know, a septic and well, you know, two and a half acre lots, that sort of thing, oh yeah, they can still do that. But it'll be a large lot subdivision, so you're talking more Anson Point than you're talking Tavern Hill or Windsor. And those houses do sell, but they not, they don't sell like Windsor, obviously. Because I mean, even Windsor-style homes, I mean, you're still talking quarter million dollars, and those are starter homes. So you start, I mean, the, like Anson Point houses, they're six, seven hundred thousand dollars. There's just a limit to the number of people that can just come in and buy that sort of unit. And that's the kind of house you have to build to sell big lots like that. Now, we can give people water, so we can get it down to an acre by giving them water, but still, I mean. There's not gonna be a lot of developers in that area that want to do subdivisions with one acre to two and a half acre lots. And that's just the truth, so there's, it's either gonna slow down or it's gonna shift. But Windsor will get finished, hopefully, they'll be able to buy enough capacity for, um, what's that one? Bettis Academy Heritage Place. Will hopefully be able to get Phase Two started, because right now, they only have Phase One approved for sewers, so. Once they build out Phase One, which they're still a ways away from, but once they do, hopefully, there'll be enough capacity for them to get Phase Two approved. If not, then I'll have to put a stop work on that. Which will be a mess. But. That's probably. Two hundred lots in there?
Two hundred and fifty-three?
Yeah, so I mean, there's gonna be lots for people to build on. Tavern Hill has a whole nother two phases. Windsor is building out pretty dang quick, but they still got a good number of lots in there. I mean, we probably still have a thousand lots that are already approved, so. We probably have enough lots to keep construction limping along for a few years. I mean, it's not like we're in some immediate, oh, there's, there's gonna be zero development, we're not there, but.
How far along is Cooper?
We're not gonna see any, any new ones coming down there. I mean, we've had a couple call us and talk to us about it, and right now, we're telling them, don't even apply. Because once y'all give y'all's approval, y'all like it, y'all love it, you give your approval to it, it still only lasts two years. So if the sewer system's not resolved in that two-year period, you're gonna have to start over and do this whole process again, so. We're just telling people, look, just until we, until you know more and you've got from the Water and Sewer Authority, a yes, we will be able to serve you. Just don't even apply, because I would hate for you to go through this whole process to get approval. And then, when you finally get sewer, I have to come to you and say, yeah, sorry, you gotta start this whole thing over again. And the regulations may have changed, the people sitting on the boards may have changed, county council may have changed, I mean. Exactly, that's what I'm saying, and now you've, you've, you're invested. You know, you've been wait, you've been holding this property for two years, or three, you, you know, I don't want that to happen, so. We've just been telling them, now's not a good time, don't even apply.
Sound like we stuck in a hard place.
Well, we are. Unfortunately, though, because of where we're located, there's very few options for us to fix it ourselves. I mean, we, we have to partner to get the capacity we need, and like I said, we can, we can increase our water capacity, I mean, we can give you water capacity. We don't have the ability to put a large-scale water treatment plant in the county. Unless we're gonna do a sludge field or something like that, which, yeah, that's gonna go over real well, so. I mean, there are ways to do it where you don't have a large body of water, but those ways are typically considered unpleasant and people complain about them, and it takes a huge amount of space.
They had it probably in Georgia in a few places.
The north side is very open, yes.
The core side is also made entirely of granite rock.
You have water, called the added well up there, they drop a well, a well across you, I mean, they get out and then. Water table, they're way low. On the added.
And if two years, we hit a critical point where it's really starting to damage things, I mean, we can invest in alternatives and help the public. Water and Sewer Authority, you know, move in a different direction if we have to, um, but we're not, we're not there yet, they're not that desperate, so. We'll, we'll see. We have a water treatment plant expansion that they're working on, I know, so. We're gonna just let them do their thing.
Does I have an intake on, on the river, on, uh, uh, is that in Creek?
Is that the free, it's at Freeland, so it's right below the?
Right below the, uh.
Yeah, it's on Freeland Drive. Goes all the way. It's almost, I guess you. Almost in McCormick. It's on the northern kind of corner, right there on the river.
Right there below Fear Fair.
Yeah, you can, you can, um, I mean, you, the Augusta, the, the start of the Augusta Canal is almost directly across from it. And that pumps straight into the water treatment plant that's on, um, is that Delauter? Yeah, so Delauter, right there. And it's, uh. And I mean, it processes five, six million gallons a day. And we can increase that capacity, because that's just drawing water in. But our sewer is completely dependent on going through North Augusta, down there. And theirs is completely dependent on Aiken. And I don't know any, I'm, I'm definitely not John Hare, I can't tell you how that gets fixed. You know, I'm sure the state is pressuring the crap out of them to, to get, get a plan together and make it happen, but. We haven't received any updates on that, we do have an intergovernmental meeting coming up, and I'm sure that will be one of the big topics from John. It will get fixed eventually, but I don't personally think it's gonna be in the next couple of years.
So they would just stay rural, very rural.
I mean, unless they, I mean, what, what's the other option? Did they pipe it to another waste treatment facility somewhere? Where, where's that in? How far does that have to go?
Where's the next closest?
I guess like the big one in Augusta.
Um, fifty-six.
That's the only other big one that I know of in the area, so I mean. What, what do you do? And if we have to put a pipe under the Savannah.
So where does Saluda take theirs to?
So they buy their capacity from us. So, Aiken sells capacity to North Augusta, North Augusta sells it to Edgefield, Edgefield sells it to Saluda. And they might have some capacity on the other end of their county that they get from Lexington.
See, they're pumping their water from Saluda River to Newberry, Newberry plant up to Saluda River.
They gotta treat that, they're off, off of one ninety-one in Newberry.
If you tell John Hare he's got to bring sewer down Highway twenty-five from Greenwood, he might kill, he might go postal. That ground up there, hard. It'd cost a fortune to come, come that way.
See, we're down on the other for water, they're coming out there, uh, Artigian down, it re- spring out, they got wells in there. I mean, they got some, I mean, you know, big pumps down.
They wouldn't have a hard time necessarily expanding water through Northside. Sewer is not gonna happen in my lifetime, I don't, I couldn't imagine.
Well, the sewer is what keeping us from not. Like you said, we could give them water, but we can't not take the waste away.
And right now, the, the selling point, I, I mean, you, you know, the housing market is insanely high. The value of hu- housing right now is, is crazy. Starter homes are a quarter million dollars, I mean, it's, it's borderline, in my opinion, ridiculous.
And add septic, that's another fifteen grand on top of it.
Well, I mean, sewer, a sewer tap ain't much cheaper, but regardless, what's selling is the smallest lot. With a starter home on it, because that's what's affordable for the large majority of people. You know, you, you start saying, hey, it's gonna be two hundred and fifty, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars for the minimum, that's pretty much what they're gonna sell, because they don't have it. They can't afford a half a million dollar, seven hundred thousand dollar house. That being said, there are some, so you will see some, you will see some Anson Points, Mount Vintage will continue to get built out. But those build out at a much slower rate than, you know, a Windsor, for example. So a lot of the developers that you see that want to come in, yeah, they want to build, they want to build like Windsor, they want to build. Tight, as small a lot as, as they will, as you will let them get away with, I'll put it that way. You know, you, we have minimums, but if they could get below those minimums, they would absolutely do so in a heartbeat if you gave them a chance. Because that's, that's the market right now, it's really tight. But I don't think we'll. See any of those for a couple of years, probably, at least not on that part of the county. You might see some small lots that have a low impact, you know, like they might put in two rows of townhouses or something like that somewhere. Cause it has very little sewer impact, but you're not gonna see a. Another Windsor come in, because we don't have, there's just no way to get them that kind of capacity. And I'll let you make your own decision on whether you think that's a good thing or a bad thing, but. The ones you'll see down there, if you see any, will be probably large lot, well, septic tank, big price points. And our, um, just, just for y'all's information, it's not terribly relevant, um, but, uh. We did, I mean, obviously, it's been, what, three years now since we approved our last major development? So I think we were down. Well, I don't even remember my password, so, I think we were. I think we were, we were down to about two point four percent growth this year compared to the, the, the over three that we have been, so. It's already slowed down, we're below two hundred units built this, this last calendar year. So. It's already slowing down, but when prices go to quarter million dollars for a starter home, what do you, I mean, what do you expect, it's gonna slow down.
There's a humongous thing going in between five twenty and twenty-five down by Country Board, past Country Board on the left. Like four hundred and something units, is that, or acres, four hundred something, four hundred and sixty acres or something.
Probably gonna be more than that number of units. The one across from exit one's two thousand units. Yeah, just that one, one development. And I think they got another one on the other side that's, that's somewhere in the thousands. And then Aiken County outside of the city of North Augusta, I think they got three going right now that are over two thousand each.
Yeah, around North Augusta.
Well, yeah, around it, it's round Aiken.
Um, on the bypass.
Yeah.
One on the bypass, there one off of nineteen, and then the other one is.
So yeah, they, they got six, six thousand units at a time kind of approvals going, um, we will, I mean, most likely in my lifetime, we will not see that kind of. Development in Edgewood County, we're utterly. Uh, but we would have to grow to be able to handle that kind of growth, I mean, you sound like we're, we're, we're too, too small to even consider that level of growth. Five hundred units is a, is a, is a big push for Edgefield County, I mean, if you come in with a development that's got five hundred units, that's, that's tough for us. I mean, you're, you're pushing us to near the max just with five hundred, you come in with two thousand, that'd be. I mean, I, I don't even know. Our, our departments would have to tell you, hey, you're gonna have to hire a third-party company to do all this, because we don't have enough staff to handle that. You know, that, that kind of development is just really beyond us, and quite frankly, I don't think we have to worry about that anytime soon anyway. I would have to hire three more Tims. I mean, I don't know if y'all have ever seen like a Horton Home development, like on the other side of, uh, I twenty off of Bettis Academy. You know, where they literally build a sea of houses, but they might build a hundred houses in a row all at the same time, you, so you call in in the morning, you have a hundred slabs to go inspecting one day. I mean, when you have two inspectors in the entire county, you can't really, I mean, I would have to assign somebody to basically live there.
That's a lot.
We can't really do that, I'm just saying that that level of development kind of gets, you need to grow until you're almost an Aiken-sized entity. Before you can even handle that sort of thing. Maybe one day, but hopefully not. Yeah, I, I don't, I don't mean to.
You'll grab me by the time.
But I would rather that not occur while I work here. That's, that's more than I want to do. Watch me pull off, what little hair I got.
I was down at Manuel's today from a lunch meeting, and I promise you, when I was driving my car through the streets there and the houses, and I was like. I felt myself doing this, going, I need to suck it in. And I kept going. Too much, it was an overload. It was, and some of them, they've, you know, they've built new ones and they're bigger, and I'm like, no. And then they had the lot right beside it, and I could have actually. If you had the toilet paper roll, you could throw it out your window and hit the other window and not miss, with the wind blowing.
In the streets or something, or? I mean, God helps you if you have a fire down there. I'm sure they had to do everything, and I'm sure it fits, the fire truck fits.
Well, I mean, if you've been to some of the developments in Augusta. When they're empty, everybody's at work, nobody's home, they look fantastic, you could easily get a truck in there, but they don't have a second exit.
Right.
But then you come back in the evening and people are parked on the sides of the roads on both sides. Because there's only, you know, two parking spaces in front of each house. So when they got friends or company over and they've got a third car, they park on the street. You could not, I mean, a fire truck would just have to run over cars to get in there, more than less get out.
And ambulance couldn't get through to save somebody's life.
You put a car on either side of the road, it tightens up really fast, um, but.
And now the foliage and the trees have started really, you know, growing, and I'm like, oh God, y'all just needed to plant a bush, you know. Cause it's, I'm, it all.
But you was in your car, you was in your car.
Well, but on the infrastructure issue, I mean, eventually, I think, you know, y'all may be aware of this, you may not, but South Carolina's the fastest-growing state in the, in the US right now. The state's gonna have to address the infrastructure needs. In some kind of way at some point, because. No matter what policies they set, if the local jurisdictions can't keep up with it, it ain't gonna happen, it's gonna be just like Edgefield where it's, I'm sorry, don't even bother applying. Because we can't serve you. You know, so, I mean, there's things like that that's gonna limit it and put it to a stop unless the state decides to do something about it.
North and out west, they come to here. North and out west, they come here.
I don't blame them.
I would too.
Vegas.
We're gonna go to Vegas, no, we need to all go to Vegas, Mexico.
And go to the Gulf of America.
It'll be warm.
Did, uh.
Might be too warm.
Did y'all get a call from, uh, Nevada on some land on Walker Road last week? Did they call you, uh?
For what now?
From Nevada.
From Nevada?
Yep. Or did you call, uh, a part of the land probably, I think he said was landlocked, but they've been invested in buying off of Walker Road.
Is that the, that may be the one that.
Yeah, somebody called, it was last week, wasn't it, last week?
He was asking about, I said, you would ha- he'd have to go and see if there's an easement, if not, then he would have to get a granite easement.
I forward all that stuff.
How, how much, how much, what side property was it, it's six, seven, how much, do you remember?
Cause the one I'm thinking about it was six and a half.
Okay, that's my one, cause a guy told, a guy told me he was from Nevada.
Oh, I, well.
And I, but I referred him to you, told me, call you.
You're the one that did it. That's what I did.
I mean, you know, it wasn't nothing I do really, but he's talking, cause I couldn't, I couldn't pinpoint it.
Somebody that buys six to ten acres, I ain't worried about what they do.
That's right.
When you come in and you got three hundred acres and say you wanna do a development, I, I pay close attention. When you come in and say I got six, ten acres, yeah, I'm like, okay, whatever. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not gonna stress over that one, but you come in with a couple hundred acres, okay, I wanna see your plan. Let, let me, let me get my head around it before you go talk to anybody, please. I mean, at this point, we're, we're chatting, so.
Yep.
About got anything else?
If you'll look at the very back, he's included, let's see. There's your requirements, there's all your base, oh, the. The impact fee. We were gonna get them a copy of our current, um.
Capital improvement plan.
Capital improvement.
Yeah, well, well.
Because he had indicated.
We'll email that out, I, uh, I looked through my office and I found one that we did years ago. But it didn't have any recent updates, and I didn't wanna send that because I don't know that that was the last one council updated. So I didn't, I didn't wanna send you an old one, so I've, I've sent, you know, Aretha had a death in her family, so she has been, been out. But when she gets back, if there's an up, more up to date one, then we'll send that to you, if not, then I'll send you the one I've got. Um, and y'all can also go to the county council webpage and scroll to the bottom, and you can see the strategic plan. It was updated not too long ago, I think, in twenty twenty-three. Um, and a lot of that stuff is actually done or is in process, but there, obviously, there's some stuff that still needs to be worked on, like a fourth ambulance and a crew. Um, and that is the hot, that is the hot ticket item right now, EMS is in dire need of expansion. And we all realize that, when the EMS millage was separated, um. Sixteen years ago or so, um, it was set large enough that it created a surplus in EMS. They were actually bringing in a good bit more money than they were spending off that millage. And so all the raises we've given, activating a third crew, putting the QRV into service. That has slowly dwindled that surplus away until now, it's gone. So we, we, as the county, if we want to expand any further, we have got to find a way to increase their operation funds. Now, you can have your opinion on how we get the capital improvement funds, you know, some people are just making it, just add it to the millage and we'll pay it. And it is what it is, there are some that want to, you know, add it to the penny sales tax, fine grants, all that stuff. And I can tell you, if there's a grant for it, we'll get it, if somebody sticks a dollar on the table, Edgefield will apply for it. We're not, we're not leaving any money on the table anywhere, um, but one way or the other. We're at a, we're, we're at a situation where we need a fourth crew, but even if we activate the fourth ambulance and hire the people, we have nowhere for them to sleep.
That's what I was gonna ask, where?
We don't have any facility that they can stay in, that's the issue. So we're, we're, it's not so much, we do need equipment, we do need to buy, continue to buy ambulances, that's always the case. Ambulances are run really hard all day, every day, no matter the weather, they wear out, we'll always be buying ambulances. It's so, it's not so much the equipment, we do have equipment needs, but it's more of, we need to hire a fourth crew and we don't have anywhere to house.
Where, so are they looking to like expand an existing or put another location?
So what we want, what, what looks the best for call time response is we build a new main station on the Highway twenty-five corridor. And then make the Edgefield station a substation.
What was?
So there would be one, of course, one or two that will, of course, stay here in Edgefield where they're at, but then the main station.
Be down twenty-five.
What was the place Tiffany was talking about Tuesday in Trenton?
So there is a building available in Trenton, um, it's the one that Generac used for a while. Um, when they were renovating the industrial park building, um, it does not have sleeping units in it. So we would still have to go in and.
Renovate.
Renovate it, um, it also has no garage, so the car, the ambulance would be guarded outside, so it's, it's not optimal. But if we, for time constraints, call volume wise, needed to temporarily do something there, I mean, it is available, we could do that. But it would still require investment on the county's part, even to use it temporarily. Cause that's the thing, a lot of, uh, EMS is not a nine to five job, it's, it's not the job that, you know. Most citizens think of when they think of a job is, okay, I show up at eight in the morning, I go home at five, but that's not how EMS works. They work forty-eight on, twenty-four off, you know, so they're there, all the, they live at their work. And we have to be able to provide adequate sleeping quarters and bathrooms, showers, kitchens. Uh, once you get to a certain size, I mean, you, you're not even talking a residential stove and refrigerator situation, you're talking commercial kitchen. You know, so it's.
That would be more for a, a station that has three trucks.
Yes.
Two trucks.
Our current, our current, so currently, we have two here in Edgefield, and then plus a backup, and then we have one plus a backup in Meriwether at Fire Station One. So the Meriwether Fire Department allowed us to build a housing unit on the side of their fire department, and they gave us one bay. So we have one unit in Meriwether that's dedicated to Meriwether, and then we have two in Edgefield. And then we have QRV fast response vehicles, of course, but those are, we keep you alive till the ambulance get here, kinda thing.
Or we evaluate you and you're not really sick, you stay home.
Unless they ask to go to the hospital, and then we have to take them, and that's a, those are some of the other issues with EMS, you know, uh.
It's a large issue.
You be a little bit sick and you show up at the hospital, and they, of course, prioritize people at the hospital. And if you're low priority, they won't sign off on accepting the patient, which means our crew has to stand on the wall at the hospital. Until the ER is ready to accept the patient and take them. So there have been cases where we have had a ambulance stuck in Augusta for three or four hours. Uh, well, it's the hospital because they have such an influx of people, especially during like a flu season or something like that.
But they're coming to the hospital, they're not gonna just wander away.
Yet, not if they're sick, not if, especially not when they ask to go.
And even have a bed or stretcher.
Um, and then, in terms of.
As a medic, I have worked that situation, and you go into a hall, you'll double up a hall. But medics are signed out, gone, that's crazy.
Yeah, not anymore. We, they have to wait for the hospital to accept the patient before they can leave, so we, we've had, we've had, we've, we've had. Actually, we have had cases where they showed up at the hospital, were waiting for the patient to be taken, and then while they were waiting for the patient to be taken. The hospital went on divergence, and then they had to reload the patient up on the truck and take them to another hospital and then stand and wait at that hospital. So it can be, it can be kinda crazy for EMS sometimes, and then the financial issue, now EMS is never a solvent. They don't make money, EMS is never gonna make money. You have indigent care, so you have people that simply have no money, they can't pay it, and yeah, we can garnish wages and take tax returns and, you know, but you can't get blood out of a turnip. But the biggest share of the financial burden is Medicare, Medicaid. They have a flat rate that they pay for, for an EMS trip, and it doesn't matter what you have to do in the back of the truck. It don't matter if it took you an hour, it don't matter if it took you ten minutes, it doesn't matter if you had to use narcotics or gave them Tylenol. They got a flat fee, this is what you get for the trip, period, end of discussion. And we have to accept it, we can't deny it, so.
That's right. They pay a flat rate for a heart attack?
Yep, you get paid the same amount for a stumped toe as you do saving somebody in a cardiac arrest.
They pay up the flat rate per day, it doesn't matter if we see that patient three times today or once a week, you get a flat rate.
So that, that eats up, uh, you know, there's only so much we can collect, and I'm not saying that, you know, our system that we have now is perfect. And it's collecting everything it can collect, but it's. E- even if we pull out all the stops, we're not even gonna cover the shortfall that already exists. And I will say, the shortfall is not the end of the world, I mean, like, we paid it out of the general fund this year. If we have to, we'll pay it out of the general fund next year, um, but that's not a solution, especially when you're talking about we need to expand and have a. You know, that's, that's a huge investment. People are expensive, our people are seventy percent of the county's budget.
And the older they get, the more expensive.
And the better the employee and the longer they stick around, the more expensive they get because they're much more valuable.
They can save time, I mean, they save you so much time when they're.
Yeah, you don't get rid of your great workers.
No.
So people, people are the biggest expense for county level government. And unfortunately, all of the alternative ways of obtaining money can only be applied to capital. You know, appropriations, impact fees, user fees, all those sorts of things, yeah, we can use them to pay for capital improvements, but not operations, so.
Would a capital improvement include like a new walking path and stuff like that, uh, is that a capital improvement?
So say that again.
Let's say the rail trail, if you wanna expand the rail trail, can you use them, I know it may be in the city, but.
I mean, yeah, recreation could be a, any.
That'd be something an impact fee could be used for.
Yeah, any type of construction, material, any of that sort of stuff can all be impact. Anything, uh, that's basically a one-time cost to the county is capital. And impact fees can pay for it, so recreation, uh, equipment for EMS, you know, heart monitors, CPR machines, all those sorts of things, that's still capital improvement. I mean, that's, it's, it's not limited to just buildings and stuff like that, it can be trucks, it can be equipment.
If it's something depreciable, right?
It can be the stretchers that they, and the power lifters they use on the back of the trucks, those things are crazy expensive. I mean, it's, uh, uh, any of that kinda stuff would be considered capital. As long as it's not a reoccurring cost due to operations, so, you know, you can't pay your power bill with it, you can't pay your salaries with it, you know. Your internet, all that good stuff, that's, that's not capital.
All right, all minds clear?
Yep.
Yep.
Motion adjourned.
Uh, well, y'all don't really have to do that.
Have a motion first.
So our minds aren't clear.
All that data's adjourned.